Madam Clerk, before you do the road call, Vice Mayor Chen has been delayed. I think he'll be here later, but he had an unforeseen family obligation he had to take care of. So, all right. Mr. Councilman? Yes, sir? Oh, all right. Road call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Callison.
Here.
Mayor Pratim Chen. Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Mayor Gooch.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All right. One announcement before we take up the first order of business. I was advised about an hour ago that the new pre-K school celebration that was scheduled for Friday has been postponed as a result of the COVID virus situation in our community. And we will look forward to that being rescheduled at a time where there can be full participation. So with that, Madam Clerk, we have two items of business on this special session. So if you would please call up the first resolution.
A resolution authorizing actions for the continued application and development of the Oak Ridge General Aviation Airport, indication of the transfer to the City of Oak Ridge as primary sponsoring party from Metropolitan Airport Authority, MKAA, and authorizing the city manager to take any necessary actions to pursue Federal Aviation Administration Tennessee Aeronautics Division and Appalachian Regional Commission implementation of the project.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Dodson, second, by Mr. Callison. Mr. Watson, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll draw my mask so I can, so you can understand a little better tonight. A couple of things I want to share with you is just, tonight we're talking about the development of the new airport, and a couple of questions I wanted to answer kind of set the tone as to where we're going. We have a number of speakers as we move forward. You've had an opportunity to review some of this in detail, and that's not my slideshow. So as we look at what's current status of the airport, we are now completion and in completion of the planning phase of the project, and we've been providing information from the city standpoint. We've used MKAA for technical development and planning for the airport, and we've seen these local matches occur through the grants. Looking ahead, why is the airport, because this has been a long-term project for quite a while, why are we working with Metropolitan Knoxville Airport Authority on this? And why are they developing it? It was initially taken forward to develop the planning portion of this through them as technical experts, people that deal with the FAA on a regular basis, people that deal with the Tennessee Aeronautics Commission. And again, we've kind of sat back and assisted as we went along. Of course, the overall goal when this project came up is the re-industrialization of the heritage industrial site. And I know that environmental management and all the work that Ken Ruder has been doing over the years along with Jay Mollis, we've seen what can be done. Well, now it's ready to move into that next phase. Go to our next thing. What's being asked of Oak Ridge? We're asking tonight for you to look at a transfer of this project over to the City of Oak Ridge. And it's being determined that we have a cost-benefit analysis, which we've provided you as background on the project. And as we complete this planning phase, we will see us moving into design and construction and environmental assessment associated with the project. MKA has suggested that that entrance of Oak Ridge into the project, that time is now to consider that, and we believe that we can handle that as long as they are by our side to assist us as technical experts. Supplemental financial support, you'll hear from Jeff Smith as next speaker on the financials of this, because we're always concerned with what are the financials associated with it. Not to belabor the point, I will let him give you a good overview of that. We do have funds that are available 100% over the next 24 months, so that gives us some breathing room to continue to do assessments, design, and other improvements. We would be doing this with some of your senior leadership at City Hall, and we'll let Jeff tell you a little bit more about the finances. So what are the advantages of this becoming a city project? We believe it gives us local control as we move into a design and development phase of that. Remember, we are the authority with respect to zoning and control and development in and around an airport. You have to have clear zones. You have to make sure that residences aren't right up to a fence line, highways to consider, TVA power lines are all part of that. And those are things that is new to the city that we've not paid that much attention to before. But putting in an airport will change some of the things that we have to do and responsibilities as a city. Finally, this kind of affirms Oak Ridge commitment to the project. Nearly $2 million in investment and time and effort has come into this from the Metropolitan Knoxville Airport Authority. And over these last many years, and this also puts us in the game. And when this is all said and done, then there's an ongoing cost associated with the daily operation. Somebody's got to mow the grass and change the light bulbs and different things that happen there. And also, as we look at the land associated with this project from Department of Energy and EM, it has to be transferred to a certain body, and we have done that before as a city. And we also have CROWET to coordinate with as part of that. So tonight, what we've asked for City Council to consider is a resolution. I call this a resolution of intent. It is an intent to transfer sponsorship to the City of Oak Ridge. And also, it allows us to continue the developmental work associated with that. We will have to look at how this project is transferred from Appalachian Regional Commission, FAA, and to Tennessee Aeronautics Commission, and how do you get that in our name? We have to put ourselves on the map associated with this project and make it not just a planned airport, but an airport in progress and construction. And some of these are going to require communications, communications with our federal officials, also with our state officials, and move forward from there. So at the end of the game tonight, I'd ask that you pass that resolution so we can continue to move forward. I think we've had substantial progress in the last six to eight weeks when we discovered this potential transfer. I know that we were approached to talk to you about the transfer, and I think, you know, in talking to Washington, we've seen that we need to move faster rather than a long-drawn-out process. So I think tonight we can give you the good overview of that, and I'll turn that over to Jeff Smith at this time, and he'll give you a little bit about the finances, and then we'll pass it on to a couple other speakers, and we can ask questions as we go along. Jeff Smith has been kind of the person that's pushed this as we've gone along. He's now on the MKAA Board of Directors, appointed by Mayor Haslam. I think we have seen, we have a new airport director. It started with a different director earlier, and we now have Patrick Wilson, who's the president of MKAA, and you will get to meet him tonight. And I think I've enjoyed working with him and talking airports and so forth. Brings back lots of different memories and all. So we'll look forward to that, and let me turn that over to Jeff Smith. We've got Ray Evans will also join us with a little update on what's out on the street right now. We have to select an EA consultant and others, and a engineering pre-design contract, and so those things are all being discussed right now. And then Billy Stares, who's done a lot of work keeping on track of this, and meetings with FAA, regional, subregional, and national. So I think we can give you the overview tonight, and would ask your consideration of the resolution at the end of this. So Jeff Smith.
Mr. Smith.
I'm going to try this with my mask on, but my glasses keep fogging up, so if I can't see, I may have to adjust. So good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to help you consider this topic tonight. Soon after my arrival in Oak Ridge, Mayor Haslam's office contacted UT Patel at the time, wanted to know if I'd be interested in serving on the MKAA board, since a significant fraction of the travel at that point was going through McGee Tyson originated from the activities here in Oak Ridge. He thought it was appropriate that someone from this community had a chance to sit on the board, and so I accepted that. Well, once appointed, I began to seek the opinions of the community leaders, officials here in Oak Ridge. What was on their mind with respect to the airport? I heard two things. Number one, can you reduce the cost of travel to DC? I have failed in that. And number two, can we have a general aviation airport? And that's a TBD. So what followed was a request from Lawrence Young to the Airport Authority, asking the Airport Authority to consider studying the feasibility of citing a general aviation airport in the Oak Ridge community. And that was in 2009. I'm not going to go into detail, but I do want to give you just a quick highlight of some of the work that's gotten us to this point. So the first thing that we did as the Airport Authority was conducted a preliminary planning study. This was in 2010. And that study essentially identified three potential sites. The next one was done in 2011, called a programming report, Phase Two. This one looked at each of the sites and ranked the sites in terms of their preference from an airport perspective, and began to provide some conceptual ideas about what each of those sites might look like if you had an airport on one of them. The third study was conducted in 2013, Phase Three, a really creative name. And this study was called the justification study, and it provided the opportunity for the users of the airport, the pilots in the area, people that would be considered stakeholders to provide input to the justification for the airport. Those three studies then were followed by the master plan. And this is the one that created what we have today in front of us, which is a proposed site for a general aviation airport. This was submitted to the FAA in 2018, and in March of 2019, we received conditional approval for what's called the Airport Layout Plan. So this document has got a lot of information in it about use and design criteria, what kind of airplanes can come and go, et cetera, et cetera. But the real issue in here that's dealt with is, can the site accommodate safely an airport? And that document, that's a subset of this, called the Airport Layout Plan, was given conditional approval in March of 2019. In 2015, another important milestone was accomplished. There's a document called the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, NIPUS, in the airport management terminology. And this is important because you cannot receive federal funding unless you are identified in the NIPUS. We were identified as a planning site in the NIPUS in 2015. In 2016, obviously, you can't build an airport without access to property. The Department of Energy conducted an environmental assessment, thanks to Jay and his team, and they are prepared to transfer property to support the sighting of this airport. All of this provided input to the master plan, and I won't go into any more details. But that brings us to today. So to set the context for some of your deliberations, let me draw your attention to the benefit-cost analysis. I don't know if you all brought your copy, but I'm going to ask you to turn to a couple pages here in just a minute, so you might want to dig that out if it's nearby. So this document is required to be submitted to the FAA for any federal funding request over $10 million. So that tells you something. We must be getting ready to ask for more than $10 million, because we went through the exercise of preparing one of these documents. So let me start by talking about the construction costs. So if you would turn, please, to page 11-3 of this document. I want to draw your attention to a table. It's the only table on page 11-3. It's titled "The Shared Funding Model." And what you'll see here, are you with me? I don't want, okay. What you'll see here are three sets of rows. The first set of rows, or two items identified there, those are funds that are already spent, so I'm not going to spend much time on those. Those are essentially the funds that produced these documents. Most of the money came out of the MKAA and the grant funds that were made available through the state of Tennessee. So that's behind us. You don't have to worry about that. The second set of rows says "Grant Funding Secured." You see there are two things. The Aeronautics Economic Development Fund, $19 million, and roughly $3 million from the RC. Those two amounts of funding have also been secured. So as we stand here today, we have $22 million available to the sponsor for this project. What we believe is necessary to finish the project is represented by the last set of rows called "Grant Funding Needed." Again, there's two lines. Aeronautics Economic Development Fund, that's essentially state-of-Tennessee funds that would flow through TAC, the Tennessee Aeronautics Commission, very similar to the money that makes up the majority of the funding that's in the row that's labeled $19 million. So that is funding that's yet to be secured. As you probably understand, Lieutenant Governor McNally has been very supportive of this project, and while I don't write the checks, I have a high degree of confidence that that $11 million will be made available to the project at the appropriate time. The last row is why we're standing here, and I'm holding up the BCA. So we believe a $20 million funding request. Now, the way the FAA does their funding, and Patrick has been a good teacher of me because it's different than DOE funding, but in the FAA world, you essentially submit invoices after costs are incurred and they reimburse you. Well, obviously, we haven't submitted any invoices. So the FAA doesn't give you a check for $20 million and say, here, spend it. They essentially make you go through the process, and so as we would get into the back half of the project, where this funding would be needed, we would submit applications for funding, and the FAA would reimburse us. We believe that it will take no more than $20 million to finish the project. So the total project cost, as you see here, is estimated at $55.5 million. That estimate was produced in 2015. Okay? So at the time we produced the estimate, we had no design. Okay? All we had was the master plan. So it's got some engineering in it. There's certainly a basis for the estimate, but I don't want people to think that we have a design that's then been used for a cost estimate. We're just about ready to go into design. Now, with respect to the $20 million, we have to get the FAA to approve the BCA. And so if you take the action that was recommended by the resolution tonight, this would be submitted to the FAA under your sponsorship. They would review it, probably provide comments. Hopefully, in a period of about 60 days, we would be able to resolve those comments and know where we stand with respect to the FAA. Now, let me pause here and make a very important point. The FAA funding and $4 million of the $19 million that is represented in the grant funding already secured requires a matching fund. So the FAA typically works on a 90-10 split, 90% federal, 10% local match. The state, it varies a little bit, but in this case, it would probably be a 5% match. So if you take the matching requirements for the state and for the federal funding, this represents $1.5 million that the local community will have to eventually raise in order to secure the last funding in the $11 million, excuse me, the $20 million and $4 million in the state. Now, $1.5 million is a lot of money. Let me give you a couple of things that eats into that. We believe, based on preliminary conversations with the FAA, that the value of the land that will be donated to the project from CROWET will count towards that matching requirement. Don't know what that value is, that they will accept, but if you say it's nominal $0.5 million at the current prices and the current amount of land, that eats into that $1.5 million to the tune of $0.5 million. Anything else that's done on behalf of the city as an in-kind contribution, so if the city goes out there and moves electrical lines, or puts in a new sewer, or anything like that that is done to support the project, those kinds of in-kind contributions stand the potential of being treated against that $1.5 million. Okay. The second item I'm going to touch on is operating costs. So now let me turn to page 12-4. This is really the table that, well, I've never done one of these before, so I can't say from experience, but if I was in the FAA, given what we've read about their guidance, when they open up the document, they're going to turn to page 12-4 pretty quickly. And what's important to the FAA is the number in the bottom right-hand corner, which says 1.27. And I'm not going to spend time going through all the calculations that support this, but essentially, they want to know whether the benefit created by this airport outweighs the cost. And as long as that number is greater than 1, you know, the assertion is that there's more benefit than cost, and therefore, the FAA can justify the investment. But from your perspective tonight, I want to draw your attention to the operating cost column, which is sort of in the middle of the page. Now, this number can be easily misinterpreted. So let me try to walk you through it. When you think about the cost side of this equation, obviously, there's a requirement to operate the airport, so what is that going to be? This BCA is based on the assumption that the city would outsource the operation of the airport. Is it okay if I slip this off or just, is it? If you outsource the airport, it makes this BCA much easier to calculate these numbers, because essentially, what you're saying is the revenue generated by operating the airport, selling fuel, hangar rents, and those kinds of things are offset by the cost of running the FBO, the fixed-based operator. So it's essentially a wash. We looked at, I looked at, eight other airports in the region. Rockwood, Upper Cumberland, Cleveland, Gatlinburg, I'd have to read all of them, but Jaxborough. If you look at what the municipalities...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, just a second. So that's number five, so let's talk about which airport you're talking about.
Okay.
We don't have much in common with Jaxborough or Rockwood.
Yeah. Cleveland, Crossville, Upper Cumberland.
And Morristown.
Morristown, yes.
See, that sounds a whole lot better.
Lebanon, Campbell County, and Gatlinburg, and Elizabethon, if I've said that one correct. Still working on that one. If you look at what those communities, municipalities, have to allocate out of their budgets to support the operation of their local airport, that average is a little less than $150,000 a year. So if you just take the FBO operation, the revenue and expense, and set that aside and call it a zero, and there are contracts out there that you can look at where the municipality essentially contracts out with the FBO, and they expect nothing in return, but they also have no liability, they don't have any downside risk. There are some contracts out there, I just looked at one from Chatham, Massachusetts, where the municipality subcontract out the entire operation of the airport, and they're guaranteed a check of $35,000 a year. Doesn't sound like a lot, but there's no risk. So regardless of how the FBO is run, plus or minus, they're obligated to send the $35,000 check back to the city. There's all sorts of models out there. There's all sorts of in-kind contribution, who mows the grass, et cetera, et cetera. Every one of these airports that's in here is managed just a bit differently. But if you just look at what the municipalities have to put on the table at the end of the year to sort of make the airport work, it averages around $150,000. One of those airports has a profit of around $200,000 in one of the recent years I looked at. So what we did is we took no credit for revenue being generated in this BCA calculation, i.e., we didn't try to chase how much fuel would be sold and forecast that for the next 25 years, what's their hangar income, et cetera, et cetera. We just simply said if the regional airports are having to commit around $150,000 a year to make their airport work, for a similar-sized airport, we would expect the same. Now, maybe we can do better, and we would hope that we would, but to be defendable to the FAA, that was the number that we used. So really, that covers the main things that I wanted to cover for you. I'm willing to take any questions. I've already highlighted the 1.27. That's the number that the FAA will be most interested in. Don't really know what kind of comments, I mean, Patrick may have some insights on that, but we'll just have to submit it and then respond to it. So with that, I'll take any questions before, I guess, I'll turn it back over to you, Mark, and you can...
Mr. Smith, I have one question. It just seemed odd to me. On the front cover...
Yes.
Benefit-cost analysis, July 2020, prepared by the City of Oak Ridge. The City of Oak Ridge did prepare this report, did it?
I'm sorry, the city?
The City of Oak Ridge did not prepare this report. We're going to submit it, assuming that the resolution passes, but the city did not prepare this report. I understand there was a number of people who contributed to it, but who would you say was the primary scriptor, if you will, of the report?
So I'm not sure what hat I wear sometimes, Mayor, but I had a hand in putting this document together, certainly. Obviously, you know the situation. The Airport Authority is looking at transferring sponsorship. You're considering taking on sponsorship. So we worked together. Mark had a chance to review it in draft form. Patrick's team had a chance to review it in draft form. But I'll take responsibility for shepherding it through the development.
Just had a couple of questions, Jeff. I was a little confused on your description of the operating cost.
Okay.
Are you saying that there's going to be no operating cost, and we're going to hire a contractor to operate this, and through their profits, there will be no cost to the cities on an annual basis?
So you can decide when you get to that point how you want to structure the contract, but many of the operations I've seen, they contract out the operation of what's called the fixed-based operator, the FBO. And those are the people that are sitting at the counter when the airplanes land, they come out, the linemen, the shepherd you're playing in, the fuel people. That operation generates a revenue by selling fuel, if you have a landing fee, you know, selling services. They might have a little apparel workshop, or they sell Oak Ridge pilot apparel and things like that. There's a revenue stream. Hangars are rented.
Sure.
Okay. But there's also cost with that. You know, you have to staff all that. And some of the operations that I have seen essentially say, look, we want to take that responsibility and outsource it to a company, and there's no expected return. Now, you could say that I want 5% of gross revenue, or whatever you think you can negotiate, or you might say just, we want you to operate that at no liability to the city.
Is that typically...
So there's no cost to the city, and there's no expected return to the city.
I could probably see, once the operation is up and running and it's successful, there would be more profit available, and the cost to the city would go down, and we could potentially recover some fees on the operation. The first couple of years, probably not. We may have to put money in. Would that be typical for this type of operation?
I wouldn't say that's not unreasonable to think of it that way. Obviously, when you open up a new airport, you know, you have to, there has to be a first airplane and a second airplane, and how quickly the airplanes come, and who decides to choose to cite their airplane here, you know, we obviously don't have control over that.
Maybe if you entered into a longer-term commitment to your operator, let's say you commit to them for 10 years, they realize that there's going to have to be some capital put in on the front end, but they're going to make some money on the back end. So maybe over that 10 years, it would balance out to where there'd be no cost. Is that, am I thinking in the right direction there?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, at that point, the structure of the contract is up to you. I've seen zero cost, zero liability kinds of operations. I've seen where the city or municipality is actually earning an income off the operation. In general, though, for these kinds of airports, you'll find that at the end of the day, the municipality is having to put in a little bit of money, and that's the 150, to make everything work. Okay, so-
So you're anticipating in this, this study that we're going to have to put in about $150,000 a year in our annual budget? So when we put our budget together as a city, we're going to have a line item for swimming pool, golf course, airport, and the airport's going to be about $150,000 a year?
Yeah, this is intended to set the expectation that you have to be prepared for at least that amount, because that's the experience of these other airports in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, this is kind of a related question. Looking at the benefit-cost comparison, I see that the costs, capital costs are shown here as $20 million on the benefit-cost analysis, but the total capital cost of the airport is elsewhere shown to be about $55,000, some of which is being spent by other entities. So I guess here, we're looking at the future cost to the FAA on this, on this table. Is that, is that basically what they're looking for when they look for the cost?
Okay. This table is built around the assumption that the FAA will invest nominally $20 million, and in return, they get an airport.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not even bringing the majority of the funding to the table. The state of Tennessee is bringing the majority of the funding. So the benefit-cost analysis is only built around that portion of the funding that the FAA would bring to the table. Does that answer your question?
That answers part of it, because I look at this as benefit cost to the FAA. But the benefit, but the cost also includes that $150,000 a year that you're saying the city would be putting in. So they're looking, they're combining their cost and ours?
Yes.
Or is there a reason why we're, reason why we're putting the operating cost in the report, in the FAA's cost analysis?
Yeah, so the, the way the guidance is put together is that they want to know sort of all the costs associated with delivering the airport, and all the revenues associated with the operating the airport. So they don't really care where the, in this case, you know, where the money came from. They know that there's an operating cost once it's constructed. They give you a guidance that says, forecast what that looks like over the next 20 to 25 years. We picked 25 years. So they require you to do this present value analysis over some defined period of time, and to do that calculation. And you have to include operating cost as well as the development cost.
Okay, so the total cost that we're looking, in their analysis, is the future cost to them plus the future cost to operate over the, over the timeframe of the, of the analysis?
Yes.
It doesn't, it sort of artificially doesn't include the money that the state's putting in?
It doesn't include the money?
It does not include the money that the state's putting in.
That's right.
So, okay, that's, that's confusing, but I guess that's the rules. Thanks.
Mr. Callison?
I just was quickly, how many airplanes are on the waiting list currently for downtown Island? Do you have any rough idea?
Do you mind if I ask, Patrick? How many airplanes are on the waiting list at downtown Island?
I think our current waiting list is somewhere 50 to 60.
Okay. And just roughly, how many planes would we eventually expect at the Oak Ridge Airport?
How many can be accepted at the Oak Ridge Airport? Initial hangar build-out, Patrick, can you remember what that looked like?
The first-year projection is to have 13 base aircraft the first year, and then the hangar development would just be based on the land after that. There's projections that run out through 20 years, that I think are at least 29 base aircraft, but that's, you know, that's just based on the forecast. So the capacity of the airport, I know that's a great number off the top of my head, what the master plan says that Oakland would build out could be, but I think there's ample room to continue to phase in future anchors on the site.
I can give you maybe a more precise answer, not that he didn't do a good job, but on page 10-1, you'll see a table, and there's 90,000 square feet of hangar space that's projected in the build-out for the Oak Ridge Airport.
Does that translate to a number of airplanes? 90,000 square feet, I don't-
I'm sorry, Kelly, I couldn't-
I'm sorry.
How many aircraft can be accommodated in that?
90,000 square feet, I'm sorry.
Again, I'm going to have to ask Patrick to help out with that.
I think you'd estimate on, based on just nine, Jeff, we have the forecast for the first 20-year period.
You're, you're probably more limited on hangar space from a capital perspective than you are a space perspective.
Okay, thank you.
This reset's a difficult one to pinpoint exactly, as it depends on just the size of the aircraft, which is a variety that is a bit more conservative.
Mr. Dotson?
So I wanted to go back to some numbers before we go back into some of the things like transportation of isotopes and things like that, which are very beneficial, and having this in the proximity of our lab is a great asset, I think. But one of the things I'm going to go through this with you is, I heard $1.5 million, and that's, is that local to get this off the ground, if you will, to start, build on this?
Would not be required to start. So we have, as of right now, the ARC money, which is around $3 million. We have $15 million of funding from the state that requires no match, and then we have $4 million from the state that requires a match. The ARC money and the state money that I just mentioned requires some match. We can use the 100% state funding to match the ARC funding. So the 15 from the state and the 3 million from the ARC can be put to use without any local match. When you get through that, and you start burning into the $4 million that we have today, that came with a match requirement. And the FAA funding that we've talked about would also come with a match requirement. The total match requirement for those two funds was 1.5 million.
And the City of Oak Ridge can match that in a lot of different ways. You mentioned infrastructure, you know, going out, paving runways, and then there was another part of that match was donation of land, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I wanted to get that clear. And then the operating expense, looking at the numbers, $150,000 a year, as Councilman Chin said, that would probably have to be built into our budget.
Well, that would, yeah, I mean-
Yeah, more or less. Okay, I just wanted, clear on the numbers. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Coe? Jeff, thanks for coming, giving us information today. A couple of things. We've been looking at a lot of studies for a number of years, and we've gone back and forth. There was time that we decided the airport needed to be shifted, moved, because of the land used, the proper land that was designated for this particular project, where it was at. One of the discussions that came up a couple of years ago, that all these studies have kind of run together. Billy Stare did a good job a couple of years ago, giving us a timeline through this process. And one of the discussions that came up either right before he did that or right after that was that depending on the exact location of the airport, once you get into that design study, we are talking a significant amount of fill work and dirt, earth moving. That eats through dollar bills really quick when you start moving dirt. I mean, that, that absorbs money quickly, as in any construction site. And I know there was one talk at one time, the FAA wanted us to be able to expand the classification of that airport if needed be. It wouldn't have to start with that, but if needed to, and that, the best I understood it at the time, contributed back to, do we have enough space and lengthening the runway to make it a potential larger airport classification? I know there was a lot of deal with length of runway, depends on how big a plane that you can land or safely take off from that area. With that in mind, and with these numbers being 2015 numbers that we put this plan together, we are now 2020, and we're still talking at least a couple more years through the process. Do we have a truly good figure on the actual construction of that? I mean, it's one thing to have the land donated, but, you know, we get into this thing, and all of a sudden, we decide, hey, we've got to fill a hole out there, or move a mountain to get the clearance that we need for takeoff or landing, and we start moving thousands of truckloads of dirt. Where is it coming from? Who's paying for it? How did we put it down? You know, it's got to be compacted in a certain way and everything else. You're not building a subdivision, you're building an airport. Certainly, a different construction style than, you know, even building a road per se. So what happens if this thing all of a sudden looks like it's a $70 million project instead of a $55 million project?
Okay, so I'll take my best shot at that, and Patrick, you be prepared to help me out here. But in 2015, when the estimate was put together, there was a pretty good study done on what was going to take to balance and fill the site. So I've seen the calculations, I don't have them with me, but I know the team at the airport went through that very carefully with the consultant that helped with the study. So there is a basis, an engineering basis, for the fill work associated with the cost estimate. Now, it was a 2015 cost estimate, when the price of fuel was much higher than it is right now. So if you were lucky enough to get in the field today, one of the big costs of moving earth is the price of fuel, and that's much different than it used to be. But, you know, I can't tell you that, you know, it's going to be lower, I can't tell you it's going to be higher. But there was a good engineering basis for the level of design work that, and Patrick has a drawing that he can show you. You know, it wasn't just a, a windage kind of a calculation. They had a pretty good understanding. To be honest with you, when I saw the numbers for a mile of pavement at $55 million, it, it set me back, because that's not what I was used to.
Sure.
But when you look at how much earth you have to move, and the fill, and those kinds of things, then it does add up. So that number's higher than I would have expected, but it's higher primarily because I think there's an allocation in there to cover that earthwork. The single biggest cost element in the project in that original estimate was the earthwork.
Jeff, I can add, and just, if I may, just clarify, it's a 2018 estimate, Jeff.
Okay.
I don't know if it was your master, you said 2015?
I said 15, but thanks for correcting me.
2018, and the specific cost for the grating and drainage work of that is $20,300,000. So approximately $20 million to $55 million is for moving dirt.
So I guess, thank you very much. My, my second part of that question is estimates and, and projections are one thing, but if we get into reality and we actually start actually moving dirt, and we've realized that it is going to exceed what our anticipation of that is, do we go back to the state? Do we go back to FAA?
I would say, at that point, and again, Patrick, help me out here, but back to the, the FAA reimburses for cost. And so if the project comes in at 57 million versus 55 to finish the project, then the FAA would be, we would put in an application for the additional funds, if you will, to finish out the project, and they would cover that cost. We would, may have to deal with the matching issue, or we would have to deal with the match. But again, because they're reimbursing for cost and not giving you the project cost upfront for you to spend, if we go over budget a little bit, my experience, and Patrick can comment on this, at the runway modernization project at McGee Tyson, which I think you're all familiar with, that ended up costing a little more than what was expected, and the FAA has reimbursed for that work.
Okay, thank you. I'll have other questions, but-
Okay, and I'd be glad to add to that a little bit. I don't want to be going into more detail than you were looking for, but both with federal airport funds and state airport funds, this is probably considered the best estimate that you could possibly put together at this point in the project. There is some contingency built in there. I can't remember if that's exactly 10%, 20%, but because this is an early-stage estimate without final design, it has contingency in there. The way the federal and state airport grants work is, before we will be issued an actual grant, we would need to have a bid in hand. The project would need to have a bid in hand. So we would have bids to get that final grant dollar. And then both, the state and federal are very used to change orders. They basically, on the federal side, have about a 15% ability to amend a grant, because they know that going into it, you're going to experience some changes. So the kind of situations you're asking about are not unusual going into the project, and even after a project goes into construction. And they're, the FAA and the state are used to that. That's not to say they don't, you know, have challenges and struggle to find the funding, but typically, projects find a way to get through that, working with the state-federal grant system.
Ms. Hammond?
Good evening, thanks for coming out. This is just a total curiosity question, but similar angle of Brother Chuck's question. I guess the numbers are 2018 per se. I know that one of the industries that's been hardest hit by COVID-19 has been the airline industry. And so were there any factors when you made these projections, particularly when I was looking at aviation forecast? And it's 2014, but there are no blips or dips or anything, or asterisks or anything with regards to 2020. So do any of these forecasts account for COVID-19? And/or are you assuming we're going to come out of this, so the airline industry is going to recover at a particular point? With the thought of, let's just say, hypothetical worst-case scenario, we go through the project, and the project works, we finish, but when we're done, the airline industry is not what it was when we started the, the actual project. And so maybe we struggle with finding an MBO, or we end up with an airport that needs to be kind of supported, but we don't have the funds. What are your thoughts on that potential, that possibility? And then two, if that happens, worst-case scenario, is that, would there be some recourse from the state, or the aviation, or anybody for, for the city?
So let me start, and then I'll let Patrick finish. When I had the conversation with Mayor Haslam at the time about whether he would support the idea of a general aviation airport in Oak Ridge, his only concern was, will it compete with McGee Tyson? And the answer to that is no. It will not compete with McGee Tyson as an air carrier airport. So this airport was never envisioned and would never support the kind of aircraft necessary to support air carrier traffic, you know, the, the traveling public as we know it today in, in the airline industry. Okay, so it's not intended to compete with that. So the impact to the airline industry wouldn't be a factor, but all activities have been impacted to some degree. The general aviation community, which is what this airport would serve, has impact, has been impacted less, and has recovered quicker. And I'm going to stop there and let him correct anything that I just said.
So I'll answer that with kind of two pieces. The, we at the Knoxville Airport Authority are very concerned the impact from the airline industry at McGee Tyson, the commercial service airport. So that's something that we're frankly struggling with, we're looking very closely at, and it is impacting all the decisions we're making, because we have seen a, a decrease in passengers just in April of 95% compared to where we were last year. Very much impacting our budgets, and will be projecting to impact our budgets at McGee Tyson for, at least through 2024. So significant impact there on the airline side. We have seen, on the general aviation side, there was an immediate dip, but it has recovered quicker than the airline industry has.
Okay.
Our activity at Downton Island Airport, the, the general aviation airport we own and operate, has recovered quicker in generally, general aviation, and when I use that term, general aviation, I'm basically talking about everything except the airlines.
Oh, thank you, I was about to ask.
Private aircraft, corporate aircraft, business flights, you know, everything in, in that realm. General aviation activity has increased and recovered quicker, and actually, some projections show that it may come back even quicker, because people are wanting to shift away from the airlines as their resources allow, and get into general aviation either through private or through business travel, whether it be charter flights and those kind of things. So a little difference there, but general aviation has recovered quicker than the airline industry and projections we've seen from a number of impacts in the aviation industry in general. When you go back to the terrorist tax of 2001, SARS in 2003, the economy and recession 2008, that you may get a one, two, three, four-year dip, but that trend line has continued to come back strong and continued to grow for aviation as an industry as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And so just from my own understanding and clarity, there's commercial aviation and general aviation, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
And what we're dealing with with Oak Ridge Airport is general aviation, not commercial aviation in any capacity for.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I can, it may be a good opportunity for you to have a little bit of interest, if you still have time for me, just to show you actually what the.
Before we go there, I've got, Mr. Chen's got a couple more questions, and I've got a couple more questions.
Jeff, if I could, one more. I'd like you to maybe take off your Airport Authority hat and put on your ORNL hat and kind of explain to us a little bit about the usage that you anticipate of the airport by ORNL, by isotope companies that we've talked about in the past. Y12, is there going to be an ORNL jet out there that's going to be flying back and forth to DC? What do you see is the usage of this in the first years and moving forward? Yeah.
Thank you for the question. From my perspective, you know, the Oak Ridge area is an innovation hub. You're all familiar with some of the technologies that have spun out of the laboratory and other affiliated companies. We underpitch our weight. And what I mean by that is when we try to engage the entrepreneurial community to come to the laboratory and look at what it is we're doing, and are they interested in commercializing our technologies, it's difficult. And there's lots of reasons it's difficult. Number one is because a lot of the innovation takes place on the coast. Don't quote me on this statistic, but there's a book called Jump Starting America, and in that book, they quote that something like 90% of the innovation jobs over the last 10 years are in 35 counties in the U.S. And you can imagine what those counties are, San Francisco, New York, Seattle, and Chicago. We're known as a flyover state from an entrepreneurial perspective, and the investment capital people will fly over Tennessee to get to San Francisco or New York. Our hope, and it's, I can't say it anymore than it's a hope, that with a general aviation airport that's sited next to the assets in Oak Ridge, that can accommodate business class aircraft, that more people will take the time to stop in Oak Ridge. I remember there was an investor who, I won't put his name out there, it's not important, but he would not come to the laboratory unless we flew him from McGee Tyson to the laboratory in a helicopter. Now, they're not all like that, but that gives you a sense of the kind of people that we're trying to bring to the laboratory to commercialize technologies. And so the way I look at it, if we can just get one more billion-dollar industry, like medical isotopes, or nuclear power, or something like that, to spin out of the laboratory because we can bring more people through the laboratory to entertain our technologies, it'll be good for the community. This is not to service the Oak Ridge National Laboratory traveling staff. Okay, that's not the intent. Dewey wouldn't allow us to do that.
That's why I'm trying to understand the need for the airport, because there's been a lot of questions over the years, well, we don't need one of those. You've got, you know, McGee Tyson, you've got Island Home.
Right.
What, and you know, the airport in Rockwood is way underutilized. What is the need for an Oak Ridge airport?
So that's the primary basis. There's two factors, two principal objectives, or two objectives in this document. One of them is to add capacity for what they call V2 and C2 aircraft. This is the business class jet that we've been talking about. McGee Tyson is struggling with adding capacity because of land issues. Downtown Island cannot service that because it's a 3,500-foot airstrip on an island, and Rockwood is too far away. So this adds capacity to service that type of aircraft for the region, more hangar space, et cetera, et cetera. And it also, and this is why I believe the state of Tennessee is invested in this project, it creates this economic opportunity to get more out of the investment that the federal government is making in technology in this area.
On the positive side, I've heard many statistics, you know, Oak Ridge is the largest city by population in the state of Tennessee that doesn't have an airport. You know, I can make the case for it, but I also want to try to, you know, shoot some holes in some things that I've heard in the past of why this, we don't need this and why this is a bad investment. Just need to try to understand and be able to have the ammunition, if you will, to be able to make the pitch and make the case for the positive attributes of having an airport in Oak Ridge.
One more comment with my lab hat on. So you may have seen recently where the laboratory, TVA, and the University of Tennessee are working with an organization called Techstars. And we have put funding into that organization to do what they call an innovation ecosystem assessment. These people have started 170 business accelerators across the globe, Techstars. They have more than 2,000 companies that have come out of those business accelerators. We've engaged them to try to get their perspective on what it is this region can do to enhance our attractiveness as an innovation hub. We have a lot of great assets here, but obviously, we don't have everything because we're not knocking it out of the park like we would like to. So with that information, with investments like this and a business class airport, you know, I can't sit here and tell you that if you put the airport, you know, they will come, but that's the hope and the justification and the reason why I believe the state of Tennessee is invested.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Smith, you had mentioned the local match, and it was anticipated that the Croat donation of land would be counted toward the local match. Is that correct?
Yeah, there have been preliminary discussions with the FAA and the Tennessee Aeronautics Commission, and it has been done in the past, not here. And we believe that the Croat land, not the federal land.
I understand.
I was hoping, to be honest with you, that the federal land, because it's a much bigger piece of property, will be counted as value towards this. The FAA has told Patrick, and again, he can help me out here, that the federal land will not be allowed to be counted towards the match.
All right. And my question is, in the event that we go forward with this, and indeed, Croat donates land, does Croat have any anticipation stated or implied that the city of Oak Ridge is going to pay them for that land?
I'm going to turn to my colleague here. He's had those conversations with Croat. Billy, you want to address that?
Mayor, we've had multiple conversations. They are prepared to donate 35 acres of land. All that they ask in return is that if the entrance sign is destroyed, which it will be when the building will be moved, that the entrance is replaced, nothing other than that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dotson, in this.
Yeah, a few things. Good to see you again. Ms. Fitzgerald and I were a part of the Aviation Academy, and you all run a terrific airport out at McGee Tyson, so thank you again for that. And thank you again for, actually, the same question I was going to ask earlier regarding the difference between commercial and also general aviation. I think it's really important to know that, and I think we all agree, that commercial airlines are suffering at present. I've heard a lot of speakers talk about that, and we hope it rebounds after the pandemic. But general aviation, this is something that, again, you're flying in your own plane, very small complement of people in that, and also transporting things like the medical isotopes. That's one of the things that, when I read through the document, and I've heard this presented several times, is the need to get these medical isotopes to certain areas in the country as quickly as we can to avoid, I guess, dissipating over a certain time and a half-life of that, so it can be used to help with cancer treatment. I thought that was one of the best things I read in this. And we have our lab over there that's doing all of these things, and we need to get those things to those hospitals and research facilities as fast as we can. While you could do that through other areas, you could go to McGee Tyson, you could also go to, I guess, the Roan County Airport. But again, you're taking a little bit of that time away that would make this less effective. So that's one of the things I really wanted to kind of dwell on. I don't know that you're necessarily the expert in that, but I noticed that it diminished the quality or the effectiveness of some of the medical isotopes that maybe were produced at the high-flux isotope reactor, some of those things. And I think that's a critical need that we need to look at as far as moving forward on this. So I just needed more information about that. If we have an expert on it, you may be that person, so.
Are you asking me to respond right now, or do you just like to have?
I would just like to have some information, more information about that, more so than I read in the booklet.
Okay. I'll take a minute or two, and then you can cut me off, Mark. Is that right, or Chairman, I guess? So one of the programs at the laboratory that has grown significantly since I've been there has been the isotope program. The high-flux isotope reactor is unique in the world. It has the highest neutron flux in the world. What that means is essentially that if you're trying to change the character of another element, and you bombard it with enough neutrons, which is what comes out of the fission process, you can create new elements or new isotopes of elements. The ones that tend to be most valuable from the medical community perspective are the ones that are very short-lived. And because they're short-lived, they don't last very long, as the name would imply. And so you have to get them to the point of use quickly. If you don't get them there quickly, then you essentially lose the value of the isotope. And so one of the isotopes that's mentioned in here by a company named Koki, who would also get into this business, is because the North American supply for that isotope is currently produced in reactors in Canada. And the Canadian government has decided to shut those reactors down. And when they do, the North American supply will dissipate. And so there are more than one company looking at how they can step into that market. Other isotopes are used, for example, when you go through an airport scanner and they swab you for explosives, that's an isotope nickel 63. That's not as short-lived as the isotopes are used in the medical community, so you don't have quite the urgency to get it to the point of use. But again, it's those kinds of things that add up to value. So travel, the time travel, by the time it comes out of the reactor or whatever, process at the lab, and you take it to the airport, that's travel time. And the shorter the life of the isotope, the more value you lose during the transit. So if you have to drive it to McGee Tyson and it takes 45 minutes, and you can take it from the lab over to the Oak Ridge Airport and it takes 10 minutes, that 30 minutes has value. So it's actually more value than one might realize, and that's why these numbers are in here. Right now, there's a drug that comes out of the isotopes that the laboratory produces called Zavigo. And the market value on that drug, I think the 2018 report that I looked at was over half a billion dollars for one drug. It's, I think, Actinium 223. It's another one of these isotopes that has a relatively short half-life, not as short as Technesium 99, which is, or Mali 99, which is the one that I mentioned from Canada. Every one of them's different. They're used in industrial applications, they're used in medical applications, but it's that time to get it to the market that's worth something. And the closer the airport, the more of that isotope you can get to the market.
I appreciate that. The medical benefits to this, to the community, and the fact that you will have these isotopes there in a timely fashion to make them more effective, I think that was one of the stronger points that I saw in this. So thank you again.
Ms. Smith, you have another question?
Yeah. Trying to understand where, and this may be something that we want to hear your presentation of the visuals before we answer some of these questions. I'm trying to understand what the future decisions are after tonight. As I understand it, what we're being asked to do tonight is decide whether the city wants to go forward as the future
Sponsor.
sponsor of this project. But I don't believe that we're making a firm decision to spend every dollar down the road, that there are some other things coming in the future. And as I see it, we've got, the FAA is going to be reviewing this analysis, and if they don't like it, we'll have to respond to that. That's an early item. There's also the environmental review that the city is going to be sponsoring, and public will be weighing in, I think, on their feelings about the community impact, noise, aesthetics, environmental features lost. I'm a bit unclear still, related to that, whether Blair Road is going to have to move or not. That, I think, is still a little bit questionable. I know the Hall Road would be gone, and that's a bigger barrier, but that's an example of some of that. And then there's the question of whether the capital cost is what we thought it was, whether the local contribution is going to be met, so forth. And I think we're, before the city would take responsibility for this, we'd want to have a better handle than we do right now on the cost and revenue expected for the fixed base operation, to understand just what the future investment is. Have I pretty well outlined what the future decisions are, or are there some more things I don't know about?
You are going to have lots of decisions to make on this in the future. I think the thing that we are running up against a little bit is time and obligation of some of these long-budgeted funds at the federal level, Appalachian Regional Commission. We have the funding to move forward. We also have the TAC funding from the state. You'll recall when we built the improved overpass up the hill here, that came out of a highway department pot of money that is used to expand economic development, okay? And so we improved that intersection. You have the same concept with the funds, the grant funds that we're receiving from here, which is to do an incentive, how much is it going to cost? And we can provide that as an incentive to grow jobs and infrastructure and capital within the state of Tennessee. So that's the kind of fund that they're dealing with. Mayor asked me this afternoon, long-term, I see us as having an Oak Ridge Airport Authority on its own. They may be deciding these questions about who's going to mow the grass, who's going to be the fixed base operator, how much is it going to cost? Do we get a penny or a dollar off of each gallon of gas? Those kinds of future decisions would be set aside. The immediacy things are selecting an environmental assessment consultant paid for by grant, and also looking at some pre-design. The environmental assessment cannot be accepted until 30% design is complete. So as we look at those changes, we're going to have to move ahead with decision tonight. That's something that I, as city manager, don't want to move ahead if there's, if we're totally against this, we're wasting our time, you know, to do this. But we've invested a lot of time, millions of dollars, and we have millions of dollars in the queue, and we need more millions of dollars to complete out the project. So I think we're going to need to move along. And so I think what you've said is exactly right. Those are decisions. The resolution will allow us to submit so that we can, is the FAA going to give us 20 million or not and set aside? And we are a new entrant to this field, that's why we've relied on the MKAA to assist us because they are familiar with that. And as they transfer it to us, they're kind of like Big Brother, I think they'll be able to assist us as we move forward. So I'll pause there.
Thanks.
Ms. Smith, thank you very much. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Patrick Wilson.
Let me introduce myself, and then I'll offer to speak or not speak, depending on what you may like. I'm Patrick Wilson, I'm the president for the Metropolitan Knoxville Airport Authority. I've been in that role for about a year and a half now. So I may be one of the newest faces to this project in the room. A lot of history on the project there. I wanted to make sure that we had some visuals to at least let you see what the airport looked like, if you weren't familiar with it. I can go over those or not, depending on what your level of interest in that is. I'll go through them pretty quickly. I think Councilwoman Smith, we can answer your question about Blair Road as one of those. So I'll step forward, and Mayor Gooch or
Let's go.
you pull me off whenever you're ready. So here is a very simplified airport layout plan of the airport on the site, and if I'm remembering and learning my roads correctly on the site, this is Blair Road, and it will remain there. Billy, am I correct on that? You've got a lot more history on the roads than I do. And you're correct that the Hall Road will need to be removed because it is within what's the runway safety area. There's a much more simplified version of There's a much more simplified version of what the airport would look like, 5,000-foot runway, 75 feet wide, and just a visual on what the ramp and the terminal building and hangars would look like. And Councilman Hammond, just to answer your question a little bit, I thought I'd put some examples in of what is a V-2 class aircraft. So, these are considered up to a medium-sized business-class aircraft. So, just a few visuals on kind of what that looks like. Typically, you can think of aircraft of this size as maybe eight to 10 passengers, and smaller, all the way down to a single-engine private aircraft. So, that's the type of access that it would open up for these type of business aircraft into the community. And there's where we are in the phasing of the project. And so, that's a very brief run-through of that. I think we covered a lot of those in some of the other questions, and I'd be glad to address anything else that you may have for me.
Mr. Dodson?
Yeah. So, on the cover, we have a Cirrus aircraft. I didn't know if Cirrus would have a hub or some presence in this new airport, because it's a great product, so.
I think Cirrus has indicated they would like to use the airport for at least training. And I think they've got plans to have it as one of their training sites. Beyond that, you know, Cirrus is a very unique and a great asset for this region to have. So, that would be a great example of an aerospace-type company that may be engaged in all the assets in Oak Ridge for research, or maybe to locate at the airport itself. But I do know that Cirrus has expressed an interest in having aircraft use the airport for training.
That's great. I think this is the aircraft that has a parachute.
That's correct.
If it bell out, you just pull something.
It has a parachute, it also has basically an auto-landing function. So, you can push a button and it will land you at the closest appropriate airport.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Wilson? Of course, he'll still be here if we think of others in a few minutes. All right. Mark?
A couple other quick reviews I've got. Jack Suggs could not join us tonight. He's ill, fallen ill, and we have Ray Evans. Both of them have been working on the environmental assessment and the pre-design qualifications and selection of folks to do that project. So, I'll turn it over to Ray and let him just kind of tell you what he's doing, because this has all happened in the last month, and we're following up on that. Ray?
So, Mr. Smith mentioned that the airport had received a conditional approval from FAA last year. Two items that are necessary to get an unconditional approval. One is the benefit-cost analysis, and the second is the environmental assessment. So, the Airport Authority started the selection process for a consultant to prepare an environmental assessment last October. They received, through a request for proposal regime, they received four proposals, and those have sort of just been pushed to the side for the last six, seven months. Also, recall that the Department of Energy did, or had performed, an environmental assessment on the 170 acres that they were going to transfer. This is a transfer-of-land EA, but the NIP process, and Ms. Smith, you probably know this much better than I do, but the NIP process requires that if you know what the ultimate use of the land's going to be once it's transferred, then you do the EA as if that were the intended use. So, the EA that was performed by the, on behalf of the Department of Energy, is very, very airport-specific. It covers 170 of the 210 acres. So, very valuable document as we move forward with an FAA environmental assessment. The Airport Authority had Gresham Smith and partners in Nashville do what's called a gap analysis, and basically that says, here's what the Department of Energy EA covered and said, here's what FAA is going to require, where's the gaps between those. And so, we've got those identified. We have a, so the city has now sort of taken over the process of selecting the consultant for the FAA environmental assessment. We have formed a consultant selection committee of myself, Mr. Suggs, and Kevin Ironside from UCOR. We looked at the four proposals that the Airport Authority had received, and we have gone through and studied their proposals. We have now rated those firms. We found two of those four firms as qualified, we found one as highly qualified. So, that would probably tell you something about the fourth one. We will be interviewing the highly-qualified firm tomorrow afternoon, and presuming that we like what we see and hear from them on a virtual interview, we will, on behalf of the city, negotiate a fee. And if we think that that is a fair fee, we will bring you that proposal at your August meeting with a substantial subject to, a substantial condition, and that is that the funds to be used to pay for those services, and that would be the Appalachian Regional Commission funds, as well as the matching funds from TAC. That, all of those have been transferred to the Cityville Bridge. The grants have actually been transferred to Cityville Bridge, and the sponsorship of the airport has been transferred to the Cityville Bridge. So, all those would be conditioned, your approval would be conditioned upon all those things happening at some point in time in the very near future. The second element that we've been working on is the design itself. And so, the city, last week, put a package on the street to select a design consultant to do a 30% design with the option of going to the full 100%. And I'll explain the 30% in a second. So, we went through our normal procurement processes in doing that, but we also posted the RFP on TDOT's site. So, every consultant, not only in the state of Tennessee, but almost every consultant in the country that does general aviation airports, will routinely goes to that site and reviews it to see what's available. So, we expect a really, really good, strong response. The responses to that request for proposals is due back to the Cityville Bridge August the 11th. We'll go through a very similar process, narrowing that down to some manageable number, doing interviews with those. And I think Jack's target is to bring that back to you in the September meeting with the same conditions, that the monies would be in place, that the grants would be transferred to Cityville Bridge. We believe
To pay for the, to pay for the design work, the 30%?
To pay for the design and environmental assessment.
Correct.
And so, the key of the 30% is that although not an absolute requirement, it is encouraged that before you complete the environmental assessment, that you have at least 30% of the design completed, so you can make sure that those two things are compatible. And one of the things that we have stressed is that these two consultants will have to constantly communicate with each other and keep each other informed as to what they're doing, what the process is. So, that's where we are. And again, we're excited about the interview with the firm tomorrow, and look forward to see what proposals we get from others as well. We do, I think we have written the design RFP in such a manner as that we would select them to do the 30% design, but with the option to extend their contract to do 100% design at a later date.
All right. Questions for Mr. Evans? Ms. Smith?
Just a quick comment regarding the DOE EA and the future FAA EA. I think there was some perception when the DOE EA was done and available to the public that it had been, you know, they looked at an airport as the operation, but they didn't look at it with the technical insight that an FAA EA would have regarding the impacts of airplanes taking off and so forth. So, I think there's an expectation that there will be a more fine-grained look at the impacts of the kinds of things that people are concerned about in it. So, that's just a comment, not a question.
Absolutely. And I recall that in the DOE EA, there is an appendix that has all of the public comments.
Yeah.
And some of those were from TDEC. And there were some very specific sort of future requirements that TDEC would have as we proceed on with the final EA.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Watson, are we going to hear from Mr. Stare?
Mr. Stares is here. I think the purpose with Billy's night was to answer any questions that you might have with regards to the Crowat relationship. I think it's already been somewhat described, but he's here for answering those questions. So, in summary, we are at a point where if we look at the transferal of this, there's a lot of things that need to be taken care of. The grants need to be transferred into the city's name. We have to have a sponsorship. Every airport, whether it's Rockwood, or Crossville, or Morristown, has an airport sponsorship application, and we need to be authorized to submit that, so that we are there. And so, we'll be looking at these processes. Your indication on the resolution of intent tonight would allow us to move forward on this and spend a little bit of staff time pulling this together. We need to be talking to our legislative delegation and let them know about the situational changes. And I know we've got friends at MKAA that will assist us with what we need to know as we move along on this. And I would be here to answer any questions with regard to the resolution that Senator Smith
Mr. Chen?
Yes. Do you see us, Dr. Watson, as being, the city council being the quasi-airport authority until such time as one is named? Or are the decisions going to be made by staff, you, or a quasi-staff team, to be able to put this thing together and move it forward?
I think there are going to be significant things that go forward. Remember that when we talk about grants and additional things, there are reviews and approvals for us to proceed and to apply, and different things like that. Ultimately, as I would see out here, is you will have authority. I would suggest that we move in that direction. However, initially, we're really talking about grant management, contract management, pulling some of these things together and get them on the book, so that we can follow and track those very closely. We have a young lady that monitors our grants, and we have engaged her. She's brushing up on FAA rules and
But there's going to be several decisions that are going to have to be made during the course of action here.
There will.
Are those decisions going to be made by our recommendation, brought to us by you, and then we make the decision as a vote up or down on which direction to go?
I would bring those up to you as counsel. For instance, what we just talked about, bringing you an EA consultant on the next council agenda.
Right.
That may, at present time, be subject to allocation of the funds and putting those in the city of Oak Ridge's name from MKA. That's where we're going to have to work together with MKAA to make sure that that's perfectly clear.
Right.
We're going to be dealing with differing offices in different locations, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would have a series of things that we would bring forward.
I think that's important for the public to know, that this is not going to be decisions made behind closed doors, we're trying to do this. But in the same vein, we don't want to, you know, slow the process down even more than, you know, a federal project like building an airport is going to be.
I think the critical project, or critical action, is that we need to submit this last phase of the planning process, and that's to get the cost-benefit analysis in, regardless of whose name is on the, you know, on the front of the book. We need to get that in, so that the sooner that that's decided, the better we are. It was not mentioned tonight, but if we are on the NIPUS plan as a viable airport, is that monies come into the state of Tennessee and an allocation goes out to each of those NIPUS airports annually? Am I correct on that?
That's right. So, once the airport is, has basically a landing service, and the FAA actually determines that, when you start to move there, it becomes eligible for what's called a non-primary entitlement fund of $150,000 a year to keep developing the airport.
Is that
Not accounted.
Accounted for in this cost-benefit analysis?
It's not. Those funds are used for specific capital projects, so they're not part of the operating side of that, but they can be used for painting the runway, maintaining the pavement, you know, those types of
Understand. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hoop?
Mark, I've got several questions. So far, the information we've gathered tonight is that you're able to manage this project with the staff you have. Do you anticipate adding additional staff members at some point to handle this? I mean, you're basically shifting Ray's priorities from a retail sector consultant to now a aviation consultant. Not to say that he's not capable of doing that, but I'm just saying you're shifting his priorities on that. Most of our staff have full plates at any given time. Are there enough room, wiggle room, within current staff to handle the load? Up to this point, McGee Tyson, the Board of Directors, and consultants have done the heavy lifting of this project. If it shifts into our realm, and we assume the primary sponsor of this, do we have the sufficient staff to handle that?
I think initially, we do. Because as I said, it would be a grant management process. It would be setting up these consultants and engineers to get in here and give us some of that answer, and that'll be management. We've geared up the finance department with the grants coordinator and so forth. So, we do have an ability for some oversight. So, my feeling is, at this point in time, for the next, say, 24-month period, the funding is here for some of the things that we need. And as long as we're not getting into sidebar needs and consulting, I think we can probably handle that with Mr. Suggs, myself. You know, I have a vacancy with Assistant Two this week, and I think I can, you may look at more of a technocrat to assist in that position if needed, so.
All right. Second question. We have had a lot of talk about grant applications, grant reading, funding streams. We don't necessarily have the best record when it comes to taking care of that, when we've gone through it. Not from our point of view of asking for the grant, but the grant being implemented. I still have a bad taste in my mouth over several grants that we've had to manage over the years. What's any assurance is that the grant processes that we're about to go through are not just as erroneous as the ones we've gone through in the past, and have delays built into them? You know, some of the hoops that we had to jump through with some of our recent projects were beyond bearable.
Comprehensible.
Yeah. So, what keeps us from going down that same avenue in this process?
I think particularly, and we've had this discussion with Patrick Wilson, I said, this city cannot afford to fund a $50 million project and cash-flow it and so forth. How does that work? Because he's doing a $100 million project over his way. And basically, they identify a cash-flow needs, and that comes in on a regular basis from the FAA in that regards. I am not familiar yet with ARC and how fast that happens, but we will also have to coordinate with funding coming out of TAC. But we think because of the smaller amounts that we're doing, once we get it into construction amounts that we're doing, once we get it into construction amounts, then I think we've got to have answers to those questions and continue to move forward. But I believe that it appears from an FAA standpoint that this is much more of a regular payment. We've got every 30 days, there's going to be cash coming in, because think about all the little rural airports that are across the state. They can't afford the resurfacing project or something. And so they need those dollars coming in quickly, and I think they've managed that a little better.
And that is something new for us as far as a reimbursement process versus applying for the grant, getting the money, and going forward. So, I mean, that is something nuanced that we'd have to learn. The next question I have, Mayor Gooch, would be more for you or our Chair of our Finance Committee, Kelly, and that with what we have going on on our plate right now, we've gone through the, basically, the funding stream for the $50 million water treatment plant. We've got millions of dollars worth of road improvements to do and to figure out how to capitalize. Are we in a position to absorb a project this big from a financial standpoint and the health of us financially as a city? Can we absorb a project of this size with what we have on the plate and in the future? I mean, that's just a, I mean, that's an observation I'm having more than anything, and I don't know that we're ready to answer that tonight, but I do look at you guys for guidance on that.
Well, I would answer it this way. I'm clearly concerned about the lack of support that we have received from some of our DOE stove pipes, so to speak, as it relates to the water plant. I do think the water plant is significantly the most important project that we're going to do in the near future, and we can have other discussions about that. And I've had some in the past, and I intend to have more as we go forward. I simply don't like the non-response, public response of support that has not been there. However, as we're here tonight, we've got a very basic decision to make in terms of whether we're going to take intermediate steps. The timing of this, as in life, is never perfect, but there is a, you know, unlimited life left as it relates to our ability to have access to the funds either from the ARC or from the state grant. And so, you know, it seems to me that my position would be, we go forward with these immediate steps that have to be done in order to comply with the federal deadlines, particularly for the ARC money that can be used so that we're not having to cash flow those as we go.
Thank you. And I understand that. I mean, part of this is, the last thing I want to do is put the cart in front of the horse, or I don't want to get halfway out there and then realize, hey, we are way over our head here, and now funds have been committed and funds have been allotted, and we've bitten off way more than we want to chew on. And so that's where I'm being a little bit cautious, and I want to make sure financially, if once we are, you know, once we do this, are we signing the bottom line stating that, you know, the 90-10 split? It doesn't sound like a lot, but, you know, sometimes our budgets come down to tens of thousands of dollars, or we're splitting hairs over tens of thousands of dollars, not $1 million. I mean, that's a significant amount of money that we need to make sure that we are committed to or being able to be financially committed to. So that's why I made this concern. And the last, my last question, and I'll let it go. Patrick, you mentioned just a minute ago, made me think of something that when you were talking to Mr. Chin, capital projects, capital improvements of anything, you know, once the airport's up and running, we are covering, and we've talked about the operating costs, but we certainly haven't talked about capital project cost, i.e. resurfacing the runway, painting lines, taking care of the lights, whatever need to be done, our capital projects. And we've run into this with other projects we handle and manage right now, i.e. the golf course. Totally different model as far as, you know, cost and scope, but there are things that we have to take in consideration on. If, once we are in the airport business, where do those funding streams come from? Or is that money that we're raising through taxes?
Well, I'll just draw on some of my past experience. If you look at, and setting aside commercial, don't have anything to do with commercial, but when you do have a GA airport, you have to provide good customer service, and there's a lot of traffic that's flying between, you know, East Coast and Little Rock and on to Albuquerque. And they stop for gas, and they're checking, you know, they're checking to buy that gas as they cross. And sometimes they don't like to go into crowded markets like Atlanta and land at the GA there. They may land here, and we are in a competition with that. Now, that may be the, that may be a fixed base operator that will take that risk and hold that inventory in the tanks. And so those are things that we will talk about later, but you got to get to the finished, you know, the finished product. And as we look at where we're at now, is that we're continuing to move in from that planning into a little bit more design so that we can get these concrete numbers and make those final, you know, decisions before we move ahead. I'm afraid, and just my concern has been that this is our last best and final opportunities to explore this airport being in Oak Ridge. And, you know, FAA's and places will have files that will talk about, you know, well, we got all the way up here to this point, and they've said, no, there won't be another time to come back and look at this. So I think the opportunity is now to get this planning in shape. We've got friends and resources that can move this forward, and then we decide where we go from there.
And I'll leave it at this.
Why don't you come up here? You're on television.
There are 74 general aviation airports in communities across Tennessee, and Tennessee has, those airports have really three sources of capital dollars that they're eligible for once they're built and they're ongoing. One I mentioned earlier is each of those airports becomes eligible for $150,000 a year as a non-primary entitlement. That's money that runs...
And say that again, explain that again, because you went through that pretty hurriedly the first time.
Okay.
But that's the NIPPIUS money, correct?
That's correct. So that's money that flows from the FAA as part of the Airport Improvement Program, which is the National Airport Grant Program. Tennessee is a block grant state, meaning that the FAA gives Tennessee a block of money, and Tennessee distributes it to airports for projects. Each of those airports, and this airport would be eligible for that, would receive $150,000 a year to use on capital-type projects. In addition to that, there's additional money that the FAA can award to projects through the state based on the merit of those projects. So those are more discretionary project grants from the FAA that would still federal dollars coming through the state to the airport for capital development. The third source is the Transportation Equity Fund, which is a source of state grant dollars. Those are actually dollars that are, the revenue is generated from aviation fuel tax. It flows into an equity fund. There's a formula, and then the, for the general aviation airports, the State Aeronautics Division determines where that money goes for projects on a yearly basis. So you'd be competing based on the merit of any capital need for those project dollars. So those are the three sources that, in Tennessee, are available to general aviation airports for capital expenses. Thank you. I appreciate that information. My last thing to you, Mark, is that I understand the urgency and the need of what we need to do tonight.
Right.
What I want is some assurance from Jeff, and from Billy, and from everybody else that's been in front of me over the years to show me this stuff, is that we're not getting out there to where we're overcommitted. If this doesn't work after the environmental study, or this doesn't work after the main engineering studies is done, I don't want Oak Ridge, the city of Oak Ridge, to be committed to this project, and we can't afford it at that point. And that's where I'm looking at. If I get those assurances, then I feel much comfortable about making the vote tonight.
Do you have any comment on that, Pat or Jeff?
I've been with this project 11 years now. I don't like to give up, so I'd like to see it through to completion. I understand your concern, and I share that concern. As a, you know, a resident here in the area, I don't want to have something that sits out there half-baked and, you know, represents a real problem for the community. So I think right now, you know, you don't have to commit any local funds to take the next couple of steps that keeps the funding streams available to us. Get the environmental assessment done, get the preliminary design done, get a better idea what the capital construction costs are once you have the preliminary design done, get the FAA to review and approve the, you know, all of that can be done, I think, if I heard Mark correctly, with what resource we have here in terms of staffing and support from the MKAA, in terms of staff time, answering questions, you know, helping, you know, the airport or helping the city get through the process, you know, answering questions, getting them to the right people. We can move forward with all of that without committing any local dollars. And we actually have roughly $20 million that you could actually spend without having any local dollars. So you can go a long ways before you have to start worrying about a financial impact. But the 30% design, I think, is going to give you enough information for the council to say, okay, does this still make sense for the city? We'll have better cost information. And at that point, hopefully, some of these funding things will be a little bit firmed up, and you'll be able to have a better discussion about, are we getting out over our skis?
Mr. Watson?
So I'm going to backtrack a little bit. One of the things as a benefit, which was mentioned in this several times, was the potential of having a motorsports park in our town as well. And I don't know how to word this, but I know Mr. Biddle is looking at developing that. I know Steve Jones, you're working with that. I appreciate that. And I think that's a great opportunity, as long as everything plays out with our citizens. But I would really encourage the developer there to support the airport as much as possible. And if that's, you know, having people fly in, or if it's having, you know, support it monetarily some way, because it's going to be benefiting if we approve something like that, if the board approves that, it will benefit that new establishment out there. So just a suggestion there, because there's a lot of synergy between those two developments as far as economic development for Oak Ridge.
Absolutely. But you'll note, at this time in the process to develop that, no decisions have been made.
I know.
So I can't throw it into the cost-benefit analysis.
Well, it's specifically excluded as a factor in this.
That's correct.
And I want to make it, I want to make it very clear.
Yeah.
I'm going to vote for this tonight, but I'm not voting as it relates to showing a commitment to support the motorsports park. To me, that's a totally separate question. And it was inappropriate to put it in here, and I think it's, and I totally agree with that.
Right.
And I don't think, I'll just speak for myself, the other members can speak for themselves, but that is not our decision, the city council, as to whether or not the IDB is going to go forward with that program, that development. And whether it's going to be rezoned, you know, may ultimately get to the city council.
Right.
But in terms of my vote tonight...
Yeah.
The motorsports park plays no part in my decision.
So if I could follow up, I understand that it doesn't, and I understand that it probably shouldn't have been in here. Things like isotopes and things like that, that should have been in here. But as far as that piece of it, I do see the connection between the two, and it would benefit if that is approved. So again, we're not voting on that. The IDB does that. We have nothing to do with that at this time.
One thing that I took the liberty of doing last Saturday was having a conversation with Koki Pharmaceutical. I said, okay, where are you in the process? Well, they've got to go through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission for a permit. But we have, Croat has reserved and set aside and transferred land for that particular site on Duck Island, okay? In talking to Ms. Carmen on this is that, what's your target date? 2026. This thing flows right into that, should everything, everything line up. But this is a real essential thing for the pharmaceutical as we look at it. And that's realistic, but it's an important project, and this will create jobs and synergies for this, and the transfer is really important. So as we look at the airport, this could be a very vital future industry and future aspect of making that successful, so...
Well, as Councilman Hope said tonight, I will vote to approve this, but I think we should look at, going forward, can we afford it at certain levels and be able to pull away from it if we can't?
Absolutely. We can't, we can't be afraid of doing that, but at the same time, as we start to look at transfer of land, if it's transferred to the city through a 770 process, we'll be looking at, that land will come to us, and we'll be in charge of that. And as we look at MKAA, now you're talking to transfer to MKAA, but if it's, if it's the project being transferred over to us, then it ends up coming back into our realm, if you will.
Thank you, Mark.
Ms. Smith?
Lots of thanks, sir.
Yeah, particularly listening to Councilman Hope's questions and concerns, it occurs to me that something that this council would benefit from is some interaction, kind of call it peer exchange or whatever, with other, with city officials in other communities in our area that have experience with general aviation airports. Because you, as a city, you've been, you've been in other cities that have this kind of operation.
Yeah, this is new.
But it's new to all of us, and I think it might be worthwhile for us to interact with our counterparts in a place like Morristown, to learn a little bit of some of their war stories. That could be done informally or could be done formally as a group. But I think it would behoove all of us to get some of that kind of input from other communities about the pros and cons and what, you know, what kinds of, what kinds of experiences the city's had, having that as a municipal operation.
We will help to, you know, engage you and get you up to date about running an airport and responsibilities as a GA.
Yeah, one thing that occurred to me is we have a fire station really close to this airport.
That's right.
That's, that's an asset for an airport.
May I answer anything else with regard to the resolution?
Thank you. So we're going to, if you're, we've got a question in the back, a comment in the back. You'd state your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Bernie Reamer. I live at 107 West Wind Drive. I'm a 31-year resident and homeowner in Oak Ridge. My kids have gone through Oak Ridge schools. I know a number of you people from years past, so I have a different perspective. I'm not entirely opposed to this idea, but I think there's some comment and question for the council and the people here. First of all, we've got a few flyers here tonight, I expect.
Sir, you need to direct your questions and comments to council, not to the audience.
Okay. Well, I expect we have some flyers here tonight, and that's great. I heard some figures about cost for this facility, which seem to be based on what might be called a pre-conceptual design. I worked the lab, as some of you may know, and you would always throw a number at that early state of design with a cost range. You wouldn't give it a point. You'd say it'd be between this and this. So you've got to escalate it a few years, and you've got to go plus or minus or something. It could be considerably more than $55 million project. There's considerable history to an airport. I think you're well aware of that, and it's always had some difficulty. And I'm trying to understand what's different now than what has happened in the past with the failed attempts to getting it here, and that's not entirely clear yet. One thing that does seem to be different is that there's now a 5,000-foot airport in Rockwood, which from K-25 site is about a 25-minute drive. And I heard some points about the isotope... And I heard some points about the isotope half-life, medical isotope, and I think some of this is a bit specious. Molly 99, which is the endeavor that Koki Farmers interested in producing, has a 66-hour half-life, okay? A difference in driving 25 minutes to Rockwood and having an airport at your doorstep is not a deal breaker for a company like this. In fact, you'd have to think about this, every company that produces Molly 99 would have to have an airport at its doorstep, and the users at the end would have to have an airport at their doorstep.
Mr. Reamer, you have one minute left.
Okay. Regarding Koki, if you put the map back up there and you see where Duck Island is relative to the airport, we better be sure that the NRC is going to grant a license to two nuclear -- 10-megawatt nuclear reactors so close to an airport before we get too far down the road here. Because they're promising something on the order of 200 full-time equivalent jobs out of that facility, which is a real bonus for economy around here, not just a handful of part-time jobs or 150K equivalent, full-time equivalent, for running an airport out there, okay? Let's not give away the whole farm for, you know, one cow here. Let's make sure we don't jeopardize the Koki Farmer endeavor by putting this airport too close to that site. Why it's on Duck Island and not on K-25 proper, I don't quite understand the merits of that, where you have a brown.
Your time has expired, sir, I'm sorry. You've got three minutes. So if you've got written comments or want to submit some, you can certainly do that and give them to the clerk, and they'll distribute them to council and also put them on the record. Any other citizens in the audience wishing to address council? Seeing none, okay. Comments, questions from council? Seeing none?
Motion to approve.
It's already been moved and seconded. We will be on the board. This is for approval of the resolution. I-7, the resolution is approved, and I'm sure that we'll be having substantial conversations about this going forward. So I thank everyone for their time and for the representatives from the Metro Knoxville Airport Authority for being here. Madam Clerk, next item of business.
A resolution requesting Governor Bill Lee allow authority to municipalities to issue orders or measures requiring or recommending the wearing of face coverings within their jurisdictions during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded. We'll wait for the folks to depart. All right, it's been moved and seconded, that the resolution going to the governor be approved. Mr. Watson?
Just stepped out.
Oh, he just stepped out. All right.
I can discuss, at the meeting on the 13th.
Mr. Truszkowski.
The meeting on the 13th, we had discussed the governor's executive order that omitted municipalities from its requirements and only included county mayors. So it was decided that we would adopt a resolution as quick as possible to request that the governor consider adding municipalities to his executive order, number 54, or a new executive order, 55 or whatever's next in line. So this is what we've come up with, and we have a substitute resolution that Councilmember Smith requested that we put a whereas clause, which you have in front of you that's highlighted in yellow.
Oh, it's the highlighting.
Yeah. So we're asking that the substitute resolution be considered by city council, requesting that the governor consider adding municipalities to his executive order that regards face masking and gives authority to legislative bodies of municipalities to make those requirements.
Move to adopt the substitute resolution.
Moved and seconded discussion. Might read into the record that the only difference is the addition of this additional clause, that whereas under the city charter and Tennessee law, the city of Oak Ridge has the authority to regulate conduct that is liable to be detrimental to the health or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. So that recital is the only one that has been added, so.
And council's aware that we've been renewing our executive order every week as required by law, so we've continued that process every week since we adopted it months ago.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded that the resolution be substituted. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? There are none? We are back on the motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Dotson.
Yeah. Give you a little history behind bringing this forward. One of the things that, more recently, that we were able to do is work on a smoking in the parks resolution, and that would give the city of Oak Ridge more authority by that ordinance to pretty much set some of our own ordinances that are not preempted by state authority. And on this, one of the things that I think a lot of us would agree, and I'm appreciative that Ron Woody's in the audience, but it gives our municipalities the authority to regulate some of these things, and I think that's very important. Mayor Gooch, I know, and many times you wish we had more authority, particularly with the COVID-19 pandemic that we're going through, to mandate some healthy practices in our town. And by doing this, hopefully Governor Lee will approve this and allow the Oak Ridge City to mandate or recommend that mask-wearing be done within our city limits.
And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the presence of our colleague, County Executive, Ron Woody from Room County. Mr. Executive, do you have any comments, sir? You're welcome, and thank you for your patience in staying.
Thank you for the invitation up here. It's the first time I've been to one of your city councils, and appreciated the debates you all had. It's always good to see wholesome debate and discussion among board members and the general public. Regarding your resolution, quite frankly, I think it's a good idea, okay? So that's just it in a nutshell. What you have in a number of situations, Oak Ridge is in two cities, Auburn Springs is in three -- two counties, and Auburn Springs is in three counties. But as we debated as county mayors about whether we're going to do a face covering, face mask mandate in our counties, we recognize early on that any rule that we may mandate or elect to invoke, it really affects our cities more than our county. And the enforcement then was going to have to be on the city officers, or you're coming back to the city council one way or the other than the county, because this is where most of our retail is, if you're going to have any gatherings or concerts or anything such as that, it's impacting the city. So I know all of our county mayors, we get together about once a week to have Zoom meetings and such, and that is one of our biggest concerns. So I am really encouraged about this resolution. You can put me down as one that says I think it's a good idea, then hopefully the governor will approve your all's acceptance of this resolution and let you all go forward. And from that standpoint, what impacts on these masks are very little to our rural part of the counties, and it really impacts the cities, which you all govern. Appreciate the work you all do up here.
Well, thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to be with you, and I would just point out to those watching on TV, that if this resolution is passed, and in the event the governor would agree to it, it simply gives us as city government the authority to consider whether or not we would invoke a mandatory mask requirement or other requirements. And we certainly don't know in the future what other mandates might come down, not necessarily from this governor, but future governors. And the precedent that was set, in my opinion, just speaking for myself, at 6 o'clock on July the 3rd, on a holiday weekend, without any coordination with the cities, sets a precedent going forward where it could be applied in situations other than public pandemics. And I'll just leave it at that. So I'm strongly in favor of this, and Mr. Woody, you're always welcome, sir. I know you don't have enough meetings to go to.
That's exactly, thank you all.
All right, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, as some of you know, I've developed kind of a hobby of looking at our COVID-19 statistics here, and in so doing, I certainly appreciate Mr. Woody's comment about the engagement of cities in this, because in our local area, the data show that the main action with respect to COVID-19 infection has been in the cities, and certainly those are the places where people engage with other people in public. It doesn't happen out in farmland. But the data that have been coming in are very disturbing. The analysis I did of yesterday's data from the state of Tennessee showed that in Anderson County, we're at seven-day, well, positive test rate for seven-day period as of yesterday was 8.8%. 8.8% of tests were positive. And just a few weeks ago, we were looking at numbers like 1%, but a lot of our people who are going in for tests are getting a positive result now, that's increasing. Knox County is 9.2%, so we're right in line with Knox County. They've had a mask order in place, but it takes a while before that mask order is going to take, going to affect their case rate. Roan County has a 5.5% positive test rate now, which is on a seven-day basis, which is a lot higher than it was. All of those are ahead, Roan County, which is the quiet area in our region, now has a higher positive test rate than Knox County did when they implemented their mask order on July the 1st. And the case rates are looking similar. Here in Anderson County, there's a case rate of 16 and a half cases per day for 100,000 Knox County has a rate, that's over a seven-day average, Knox County has a rate of 21.8 cases per day for 100,000 population, which is worse than ours, but we're in the same neighborhood now. And Roan County is up to 9.8, again, on the seven-day average. And again, all three of those numbers are above where Knox County was when they issued their mask order. So they were looking at the data and saying, we've got a situation that we need to get under control with an order, and, you know, we're sitting here and watching the same situation develop without the authority to do anything, which has been frustrating. So it's, I think it's important that we take action. We can't tell the virus to go home and not bother us, but wearing of masks seems like one of the few effective options we have available to us. So I hope the governor listens to our heartfelt resolution, and I appreciate the involvement of other folks in supporting this.
Ms. Hope.
We've got to be cautious about what we're doing and asking for. I don't want us to go down a slippery slope, so to speak. I understand, it's a great ideal, we should be wearing the mask, especially when we're in public environments. It's good, it's just like part of our other good hygiene habits that we should be doing. It's important for all of that to happen. I'm not denying that, but we are treading on individual rights, and we've got to be extremely careful with that. We are asking, you know, as mandates become the new norm, how far, you know, what's the next thing that we mandate? And that's what I want to be very cautious about. And that's the thing that I have the big dilemma on in this, is just that, you know, we are just, there are certain things here that just, that goes against the grain of me on individual freedoms, and this is one of them. Is it a bad ideal? No. I mean, I support the mask-wearing, especially if I can start to see statistically numbers start to affect it. We haven't seen that in Knox County yet, but like Ms. Smith says, it may have not been implemented long enough to actually see the numbers go down. The other thing that's really disturbing is that the numbers, the positive case numbers and the cases per 100,000, these numbers fluctuate all over the place. Depending on who you talk to and how they're manipulating or looking at the statistical data points will change the positive cases. Not saying that we don't have it, I'm just saying that it's very unclear what basis numbers do we use. Are we using the same numbers the state are? Are the counties using the same state numbers? Are the cities using the numbers provided that way? I know the sources that we're getting it from, but they are a wide range of numbers, and I'm not 100% sure on the data points. And so that's where I'm at, that's just my concerns.
Well, let me respond to that briefly with a couple of points. The data points, whenever we would use them, would be the data that we're provided from the Tennessee Department of Health. Those are the only ones that we would have access to. This resolution does not say we're going to, you know, enact a mandatory mask requirement. What this says is it would give us the right as a city to make a decision as to what we were going to do. And I certainly, as mayor, would not sign an executive order as it related to a mask, a mandatory mask order that had not been approved by a majority of city council. So I want to make that, I want to make that clear. I mean, I have my own opinions about the efficacy of masks, but this doesn't say we're going to do it. This says, give the city the right to make its own decisions and not have to defer to another government official. And so that's the clarification I'd make. Mr. Chin, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, and I share the Councilman Hope's concerns about this infringement on our public, you know, civil rights. This is a slippery slope, most definitely. And honestly, if I was to be asked to vote on mandatory masks in the city of Oak Ridge right now, I would vote no for that. However, I see this as a different issue, as the mayor brought up. This is not a vote for or against masks at this point. I definitely see the positives of wearing masks. I wear masks. I've been doing some significant traveling lately, and because of that, I think it's a good idea to wear a mask. But to put a mandatory resolution on the books, I really don't think that's a good idea for a lot of different reasons. But as a conservative libertarian-type person, in my opinion, the closer that decisions can be made to the local level, the better decision is made. And if we as a council decide to do that, I think that's a better decision than having a decision handed down from high up, from federal government, state government, county government. The better decision is always made at the local level, and I wholeheartedly support that, and I support this resolution because of that. I think we need to make a decision locally about this particular idea of whether to do it. So I do appreciate my colleagues' thoughts and concerns about this, and I will, I'll support this for sure. But at this point, I think there needs to be more information put forward on the benefit, cost benefit analysis of, and life benefit analysis of whether or not to wear masks.
Mr. Dotson, then Ms. Hammond.
Okay. First of all, I do agree with Councilman Hope and Councilman Chin. This is giving us the ability, not telling us to do this. And I think local authority to do some of these things is what we all would really like, not just for this, but for other things that we would like to do in the city of Oak Ridge. Ridge, and it would be a vote. We, we don't just one person make that decision. One of the things that I was very happy to see was there wasn't a state mandate from the Commissioner of Education that we cannot require our students in our schools to wear masks. Locally, our superintendent and his leadership team agreed that it would be a good idea if we did require students to wear masks. We're going to go back to school pretty soon, and that was a very important decision. It was made locally, and it was made through the Board of Education as well as through the school leadership. So anything like that, that we locally feel is most beneficial to the safety and health of our citizens, and those are our young citizens, again, that's kind of a microcosm of what we're talking about tonight, but it's working, hopefully. We'll see how that works out in the next several weeks. But I really appreciate the, the schools stepping up and doing that, and I think we're taking some guidance from what they did with this, and hopefully we don't have to do this. But if the situation arises, we do, if, if it's granted by Governor Billy, we would have that ability to do something like this. And I, I think it's something that we should have more control over, along with other things, but this is a start. This is a start. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Hammond?
Yep, just echoing, before we get to the vote, that I think it's, this is a really, really good move. I appreciate your leadership and your bringing it forth in the last conversation that we had. So I'm, I'm excited about at least presenting forth this request. I'm also excited, and I certainly hope that it finds favor in the governor's eyes, and we have the opportunity to have a discussion as a council about masks, the efficacy, whether or not it'd be beneficial to present that forth. If nothing else, it'd be a space for communities to see a healthy discussion on it. I mean, you, you get kind of all of this stuff flying around, but I think we have a, a core, an ability here to, to have a healthy discussion that I think would be beneficial even beyond the vote that it would lead to or not lead to. So I would hope that we get the opportunity to have that, that discussion here as a team, given, you know, this, this finds favor. Also, the last thing I wanted to say as an aside, it's just personally, again, it's been acknowledged, but, Brother Woody, it really is good to see you here on tonight. And I just want to personally let you know that it means a lot, that you came and you stayed all the way throughout this, for this conversation, and you stood up and you gave positive support publicly here in, in this meeting. You didn't have to do that, and I do just, it's been echoed, but I personally want you to know that, that, that really does mean a lot. Thank you.
All right, we are, we are on the board. I-7 on A's, the resolution is adopted. Having concluded our business for this called city council meeting, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance and your participation.